Now, I wish they'd just shut that TV off up there.
I know.
Okay. Hello, I'm Bob Toomey, and welcome to our Candidates Forum. This is the 2014 School Committee Candidates today. Two were coming in, and a third is vying for the job. With me today are Jeanette Cummings-Leeery, a current school committee member, Ellen Killian, a current school committee member, and John Mahal, a challenger for the school committee.
Thank you.
Before people get going on this, I wanted to thank these people in particular for being here today. We had to rearrange schedules a lot, and all three of these people have had a hectic week, not number of weeks, but I know in particular, Jeanette, you were down in Florida with the high school cheerleaders who happened to take first place in their competition. And being away from your family and your other required responsibilities takes a lot, so you're doing that for the town, and I appreciate that.
Vacation too.
Yeah, really?
Vacation too.
Well, I tie it into your profession.
Okay.
Ellen, the last night was a grand march in the junior prom, which went off tremendously well. Bill Gaines has said, "I want to thank Bill for filming it," but what a job that was tremendous. And I know it took months to plan it and execute it, and you deserve a lot of credit. But again, that's time taken away from your family and your other responsibilities. So before you're critical people, or particularly elected officials, think about them too, because they put a lot on the line. John, I know was in South Carolina on some business, and then your father was sick and had heart attacks every, so... It's just been, these people lead ordinary lives, but also very hectic lives. And the fact that you're willing to put your name out there and your physical, at the time, I want to thank you personally, and the town should be grateful for all you're doing, whether you're winning or not, it's the fact you're putting your name and reputation out there and your hard work. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
So, that having been said, we have an over, we have a large crowd here today, so we've got to kind of keep the noise down. Please let the candidates answer. First, we're going to have Jeanette talk first, then Ellen, then John, talk about an opening statement, what they want to do, what they feel. Then we'll ask questions of each candidate, then we'll do a closing statement for each candidate. So, first, we'll start with Jeanette Cummings-Leeery.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you for putting today on. My name is Jeanette Cummings-Leeery. I am a current school committee member, and for the past two years I've been the chairperson. And I'm looking forward to continuing the momentum we've had in the past couple of years, our strong positive movement. I live in town, obviously, with my husband and my two sons, who are both in Abington Public Schools, one at the Pro Leo, one at the high school. I have a background in education, and also education administration, so I feel that ties right into what we do on the school committee. And the past couple of years, as we all know, have been difficult with cuts, and I think we've maintained, and we're starting to see a little bit of, you know, moving back up, and I want to keep that going. And so I decided to run for reelection.
Thank you. Ellen Killian.
I want to thank the Democratic Town Committee, forum moderator, Mr. Bob Toomey, Abinucable, and anybody watching at home, as well as our audience. My name is Ellen Killian, and I'm running for a second term on the Abington School Committee. I feel that after my last three years of serving on the committee, I've demonstrated that I can be, I'm very positive, I'm physically responsible, and I'd like to keep going with that. I'm a lifelong resident of Abington. I'm an Abington High School graduate. My husband Ron and I have chosen to raise our three sons here. Two have graduated and gone on to college. One is currently a junior that had a great time at the prom, as well as Bob's son. I've been very active in the town, served on PTOs, boosters, participated in fundraisers. It's a great place for people to live and raise their families. My background, I have a degree in early childhood, taught in preschool for a number of years, went back and got healthcare certification and into the business world. I work as a COO of a private healthcare company. We do medical billing, so I have a good experience with what it takes to do contracts and budgets, et cetera. And I really think that I bring a lot to the board, and I'd like to keep going.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Jonathan Mahal.
Thank you, Bob. I want to thank you for having us here today. My name is Jonathan Mahal, and I'm a lifelong resident of Abington. I am running for school committee because I have been, the past two years, I was actually employed in the Abington Public Schools, and I feel with the insider knowledge of what's going on, I could bring a lot to the table. I was, I'm a former middle school science teacher, and currently I am a development coordinator at St. Bridget's School in Abington. I'm a member of the class in 1998, Abington High School, and would like to move Abington education forward by making sure that all of the services that students need are provided in the highest possible care for Abington education. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Jeanette. Okay, we're going to start questions with Jeanette Leeery, Jeanette Cummings-Leeery, and we'll go, we'll alternate each way down the line, so nobody goes first all the time, nobody goes last all the time. So, Jeanette, each one of you will be answering this. Why do you think that you are the one qualified for this position?
I feel that I'm highly qualified for this position, not only for my experience, but for my education. I have a background, an elementary degree, a bachelor's degree in elementary, and a master's degree in child development and early childhood education. I've been in the education field for over 20 years, first as a classroom teacher, and then as administrator in education, which I continue to do. I'm also not only have the background in education, but I'm very active in our community and have been for, since we moved here, have been a, and currently still am, a first community CCD teacher for St. Bridget's, and I've been doing that for about seven years. Abington Little League Boys soccer coach for many, many years. And I feel that having the experience of sitting on the committee for the past three years and knowing the ins and outs of the schools very great detail give me the experience we need to keep moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Killian, would you like me to read the question?
No, I think I'm okay. As I stated in my opening statement, I have a degree in early childhood and also work in the business field. So I know what it's like to both try to put the best product in front of a classroom or in a school, and at the same time, you know, you're dealing with a budget, which is what I deal with day to day. And at the same time, you have to be creative or innovative in your thinking and do the best with what you can while living within your means. And I think I've shown that, and I'd like to continue going with it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mahal.
Thank you. Currently, I'm the chairman of the Park and Recreation Commission here in Abington, and I spent my entire career in the field of education. I do understand what it takes to make schools great. As, in Abington, I served as a long-term substitute, a paraprofessional, and a special education tutor. So I've lived in the trenches of the Abington Public Schools. I started my work here in Abington about 14 years ago. My first job out of college was at Center School, and I worked in the, in a behavioral program for two years. That experience taught me a lot about special education and allowed me to appreciate special education more than I had ever realized. I have been on the Conservation Commission here in Abington. I have served as a soccer coach, baseball coach. I currently teach sixth grade CCD at St. Bridget's School. And being born and raised here in Abington, I have a great appreciation for what people of Abington need and would like to help move Abington education forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, we'll start with Ms. Killian. What changes would you like to make within the Abington school system?
Well, I think we need to get our schools up to where they need to be technology-wise. We're dealing with some very old buildings, both structurally, as well as what they need to have inside. I grew up laying in bed praying for the fire horn for the no-school. Now, we have a great system where you either get a text message, or a phone call, or you can go online. You don't have to stand in front of your TV and wait for, you know, to see your town on there. So, you know, those are some of the things we've been able to put in place, but at the same time, we need to get more for the kids, technology-wise, you know. And I think if we can continue to get the state to hold up their side of the deal, they put programs in place, and they don't come through with the money.
All right, they expect you to implement them without the tax base or the funds to do it.
Right, right. And I think that, you know, that's one example. That's why I was referencing, you know, the no-school part. We've been able to put something like that in place. We need to get the technology in the classroom up to where it needs to be.
Thank you. Ms. Mahal.
Thank you. I agree with Mrs. Killian about the technology. I would also like to increase the amount of educational support staff to ensure that delivery of services in Abington is the best that they could possibly provide. Working at Beaverbrook and Woodsdale the past two years, I see how hard it is for the support staff and how they have to split themselves in half just to make sure that delivery and services are the best they can give. And they're asked to do so much with so little, and it's just not fair. And you don't hear them complaining. They go to work, they do their job, but they need someone to be the voice on this board to make sure that they have everything they possibly need. So, I hope that, and that, thank you, Bob.
Okay. Ms. Leeery?
I think the priorities for myself, which has, you know, Ellen mentioned, state mandates, a lot of the items we have on our bucket list, on our wish list, are tied to our budget. You know, if that was a never-ending, you know, extra, you know, support in the classroom, by all means, but it's all comes down to the budget. Having said that, I would like to reduce our class sizes, but in doing that, and we don't have the capacity to do that. If the funds were unlimited and we could hire a teacher tomorrow, we don't have an empty classroom to put that teacher in. We need to really take a hard look at our buildings. We need to figure out how and what is the best way to educate the children in Abington. Class size, one thing I'd like to see reduced. The technology needs to be upgraded in all of our buildings, as Ellen mentioned, and also our overall environment, the buildings themselves. We have some of the oldest school buildings, not only in this community, but in the state.
Thank you.
Well.
Okay, our next question. Are you in favor of the new school building process, the building itself, the whole gamut of it? The planning, the staging, the implementation, the building, the construction?
Simple answer is yes. Not only is it going to help the Abington education, it's also going to benefit more than just that, the sports programs, they'll be making, the fields will be top-notch fields. But the facilities of Abington, like Mrs. Leeery said, you know, we have some of the oldest buildings around. And right now, we have the opportunity to capitalize on the fact that the state's going to pay for about half of it, if not a little bit more. And if we don't act now, we're going to have to pay for it later, and it's not going to help. So, yes, I am in favor of the new schools. I think it'll just benefit us greatly, especially with our enrollment is down so low with all the private high schools, that we can get some of the kids to come back to be proud to say that they go into Abington High School and they're a graduate like myself. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Yes, 100% I'm for a new school building. I sit on the school building committee, and we meet weekly, and we have been for about almost 18, two months, two years now going on. And the items and the things that a new school can afford this, the students of Abington, would be insurmountable, not only the new environment, but the, with the new environment, the capabilities of doing so much more. The students in Abington do wonderful things and get accepted to top-notch colleges year after year. And I just feel that with, with what they have, they do that. And if they had so much more, I just think that, you know, the sky's the limit for them and all of our students. Also, it also would benefit our community as a whole. These new buildings will not only be just for the education purposes, we're also have in the building, many areas that are, would be tagged for community use also when the school is not in session. So that also would help our community to tie it in. And it's, it's something we need to do. The unfortunate thing is, if we don't act on this now, who's to say when we're going to get back, if we get back in the queue for the MSBA? And if we don't, then we've passed up a large opportunity for Abington to move forward. And the fact is that eventually, within, you know, a few years' time, not even an eventual situation, we need to address the situations in our current buildings for the being compliant, ADA, electrical, all of those items. And that ticket and that price tag will be on the town of Abington solely if we don't take advantage of this opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Killian.
I agree with what, everything that both have said. At the same time, as Mr. Mahal mentioned, you know, the state is willing to pay for more than half of this at this opportunity, and that window's closing, so to speak. And we really need to, you know, put forward with it. At the same time, we're paying for all these other new schools in surrounding towns, you know, Rockland, Whitman Hansen, Hanover, all around us. Our tax dollars are going, going there, and we need to take advantage of this. Anybody that attends different events at the school sees how great our children are, and they deserve to be able to shine in a new building.
I agree, especially, I know EV just had a new building open up, as you said, Whitman Hansen, Rockland. And we're paying for that as state taxpayer, so it would seem to me wise to try to move on with this. I know one of the discussions, the main one now is that the idea is a seventh through 12th grade, if I understand it.
No.
No, okay, that's why I'm glad I brought this up.
It actually will be a middle high school of five through 12 with a pre-K component. And what that will entail is that the fifth and sixth graders and the seventh and eighth graders would be on one side of the building, but the fifth and sixth graders would be on one floor, seventh and eighth graders will be on another floor. So almost as if we have it now, that they would be separated. On the other side of the building, we would have the high school students, nine through 12, just as we have today, different start times. So that type of the format of our day will remain the same, so the students wouldn't be intermingling during the day. Obviously, there would be, there'll be shared facilities, which is a huge asset and a financial savings. The kitchen area, the maintenance, all of those type of facilities would be housed to service both sides of the school. Two separate cafeterias, two gyms, so truly the students will be separated and would still enjoy a school day as they do now, but just with greater educational amenities. The pre-K component would be on the high school side, and what that will entail is to allow us to offer a, another educational offering for our high school students. They could have a, almost when they leave high school, a certification in early childhood, you know, that they could then go on to a preschool if they wanted, if they weren't sure of their, you know, college path, or if they were not choosing college, but they would still have something that they could start a career on from high school. Allowing us to do that would then, not only building a school, does it help the students in the school, it helps the overcrowding in all of our buildings. It would allow us to take Center School offline. It would then, we would then have at the Beaverbrook, our kindergarten and our one and two grades. We would then have three and four at the Woodsdale. So each class and each grade then has more space. And as I mentioned before, if we want to hire a teacher, we have nowhere to put them. This would allow us to have that opportunity, that if we had the financial capabilities, we could then hire teachers and lower the class sizes, because we actually have somewhere to start a new class.
Sorry. Now, Ms. Killian, do you think that that's appropriate to have students of different ages in the same building?
Yes, because as Jeanette was mentioning, they're going to be in the same building, but they're completely separate schools, with the exception of the sharing of the facilities, the lunchrooms, the electrical, the heating, all of that. And there is a benefit. Right now, we, when it's Read Across America Day, we try to get the high school kids, we've got to physically get them to either up at Center School to read to the kindergarteners or down to Beaverbrook, and, I mean, it's, it's a benefit. The high school kids benefit from being around the younger ones, and the younger ones, they love it. They love, they love to see a 15-year-old wearing a Dr. Seuss hat and reading Hop on Pop, so I think it is, yeah.
Ms. Mahal.
And I agree with that. And one of the concerns that people were saying was that, that the high school kids are on with the middle school kids, but like this, there's different start times, they, all of different entrances and exit times, so none of that will be intermingled. And I just think it's a great benefit to the town of Abington. And other people are concerned about their taxes, but like we said, if we lose this opportunity right now for the state to actually have to pay, the taxes are going to be outlandish, and it just won't be feasible at that point. So I'm in favor of the schools, and please vote for the new school. We need it, the kids need it. Thank you.
One more, just one thing to tie, the re, one of the great reasons to have a middle-high school together is that both of our buildings in our community, the high school and the middle school are the oldest ones. They need to be addressed. By us having a middle-high school together on the same piece of property and having it be one project allows us to go through the MSBA process as one school, therefore allowing us reimbursement for the entire project, as opposed if we had decided as a community that we were only going to look at the high school or only going to look at the middle school. That would still leave us, what are we going to do in three years now with the other building? We may have a new building at the high school, but now we need to address our middle school needs. So merging our two schools allows us to get the full financial benefit from the MSBA. And we have, you know, as I sit with the meetings with the architects and the consultants, we have the perfect setup. The land at the high school that it's going to be built on is already, it has the electrical, it has the storage, it's, it has all of those components that we won't need to bring to a new site, so truly.
Everyone on the same page with that answer? Great, thank you. Okay. How do you feel, oh, sorry, start with you, Jeanette, now. How do you feel about summer reading requirements? Mandatory or optional?
Right, yeah. I think, it's funny, we have been discussing this for many years at the school committee. And last year, there was a change due to our pushing that we needed, we felt we needed to formulate, formalize a little bit. There's always been suggested summer reading. Each grade has a list, and that, that has always been in place. But there was really no follow-through or tied to what, what became of that. So through some pushing on our own at the school committee, last year, they partnered, the schools partnered with the Abington Public Library and have a more formalized, where children are logging hours and actually not being tested per se, but at different grade levels. Maybe there's a book report, maybe there's, so I'm a large proponent for it. I do know, I just received a letter from Deb, our children's librarian, and summer reading did increase by almost 32% this past year. But it, the unfortunate thing I feel is that it's the younger children that that increase happened from, and I feel that we need, somehow, we need to get our high school students, middle and high school students, reading over the summer. I don't know the solution to that. There is a lot of research out there that says mandatory summer reading, when we were speaking about this last year, isn't, isn't beneficial, because the students are just, if they read it, they're just reading it to read it, or they're going online and they're reading, you know, a quick...
The Wikipedia version.
Exactly. So they're not fully receiving the benefit of the, you know, the benefit of reading a book. So, I'm a proponent for it. I would like to see it continue to be strengthened. I was pleased with the steps we took last year in partnering with the library, and the library came to schools, the schools had kickoffs for it. But I would like to see it somehow, you know, more tied into our older students also.
Thank you. Ms. Killian.
As Jeanette mentioned, we've been discussing it quite a bit. Personally, I'm in favor of it. A long, long time ago, I worked for the Burton Wills Library, which is the, now the Abington Library. So I'm kind of one of those book people. I love, personally love being around books. I think the library is a great place for a kid to be. One thing that we've done over this past school year at the high school is, and it was actually on a recommendation from the NEASC report, was to put in place the one-school-one book. So the entire high school this past year has been reading, I believe it's Unbroken, both the students as well as the faculty. So they've tried to filter what they've read through in different classes at the high school. And for the most part, I think it's been, you know, received very, very positively. At the same time, I think because especially the older children, they do things differently. They don't really want to pick up a book, that kind of book. They want, whether it's on a Kindle or on their iPad or whatever. And that's also another thing that we've sort of been, you know, tossing around a little bit, that maybe that's the way to get them more motivated. And, you know, whether it's the actual summer reading list, as well as if you can get a child motivated to, you know, read a Sports Illustrated or anything that, you know, is going to keep them reading because it keeps their mind going all summer.
Ms. Mahal.
Well, I do think that summer reading is essential to keep the brain moving. When I was a classroom teacher, the school district that I worked in did require summer reading, and it was one book for the summer, and students created either a report or a poster or something. And I think it did benefit the students with regard to the high school kids and the older kids trying to read. Some type of system put in place, whether it's a reward system or something, to really recognize them for achieving their reading, it would really help. But I think summer reading is important, and I also think it kind of goes back to, at home, the parents of the first teachers, and if they could push the fact to read, like my parents did in the summer, whether it was assigned or not, it really helps you when you get back to the classroom after a long summer. Thank you, Bob.
Jeanette, now you talked about this earlier, but when you have these assigned readings or even optional readings, a lot of the families may not have access to the books. The library may not have enough copies, you know, so that was one issue that we had to understand, because I'm like you folks, I'm going to have it read, and I push it on my children. But again, if we're kind of equal to it, then, you know, the one book, one school, one book, is that...
Yeah.
I participated in that, with the Unbroken, and I thought the concept was tremendous. I don't think the book itself was the perfect one, because a lot of young women weren't interested in it and stuff. But the concept, I assume, we're all agreement is a pretty good, I think, concept.
It's great.
Right. And I don't think that we would ever find the perfect book, because you have such a range and a diverse population of students. We all, we are also doing the one-school-one book at the Pro Leo, and they're actually having, due to a grant from the AEF and maybe the Abington Cultural Council, I'm not sure, it's second one, but definitely AEF. It's, the name of the book is called Me Nubby, I believe, and it's, and the person who wrote the book is actually coming to speak to the students and the staff next week at the Pro Leo. And it's about a student that was bullied in his younger years, so they are doing it at the other schools also.
And again, with the one-book, one-school, the publishers have provided a book for every student, every faculty member, et cetera. Okay. That's, Ms. Killian, what about taxes and, you know, expenses are always a big deal at schools? I don't want to be into particular dollar amount, but is there a way, you think, maybe we could, you know, get more services from the schools with less, with less money, if that's possible? And so what do you think it might be?
Right.
Is it giving?
Well, I think right now, we've talked a little bit about it earlier, you know, the overcrowding that's going on in the classroom. But at the same time, if we don't have the funds to put another, open another classroom and put another teacher there, we need to be more innovative in our thinking. One thing that we are doing at the high school, and I'm not sure if it's at some of the younger grades, we're using virtual classroom. So this accommodates both the children's schedules, as well as they're able to take the class, get the credit, and take the exams, and without us physically having to have, open a classroom and have a teacher there. We're doing some virtual chemistry, we've got some virtual English classes going on as well. And at one point, we were sending some of that out of district, in other words, but now we're keeping it right in Abington.
And the students get credit for it?
They get credit?
In building classes?
Right. Another thing that also is a way of us sort of utilizing our resources and maybe getting a little bit at the same time, and we have textile recycling bins at all the schools. So this is a win-win for the town, because these items don't end up in the trash, so the town's not paying for that. They get recycling, it's encouraging everybody to recycle, and the schools get some money back, so.
Okay. Ms. Mahal.
Well, I think that the schools are doing that right now with lack of funding. Like I said earlier, the teachers and the educational support staff show up every day and spread themselves so thin that it's, it's, I'm honored to know and have worked with these teachers. When I was a long-term sub, I know that I had 33 kids in a classroom. Almost half of those students had some type of services, and then you'd have two other kids who maybe had other type of services, and by the way, you have to teach them, and you have, they should be passing the MCAS. And it's, it's not an easy task for them. should be passing the MCAS. And it's not an easy task for them. So, what I would suggest, if we can't hire new teachers, is to find a way to hire more paraprofessionals or special education tutors who have significantly less salaries than the teachers, and find a way to do it that way.
To work with individual students?
To work with individual students or small groups of students to make sure that service delivery is top-notch. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
I think, you know, the thought of trying to do or provide more services with less funds is something that we should try to, that thought, try to change because we've been doing that for years. And to move forward, we really need to, in some places, the funds have to...we need the funds. Regardless, having said that, I think continuing to do what we do now with sharing and partnering with strong entities like North Harbor Collaborative. We have a strong relationship with them, and they provide a lot of services for our students with special needs that are allowing us to keep our students in district, as opposed to having a child educated out of the district. Sometimes, that may run well over $100,000 for one student. So, that type of partnering is what we need to continue to do. We have been doing it for years. I think we also need to, as Ellen said, small things, although, you know, the textile recycling, that's a small amount of money, but it goes straight to the PTOs every month that then support the students and things that they might not be getting. Excuse me, I think our teachers do a great job at asking for grants and applying for grants through different venues. And we're very fortunate to have many civic entities in Abington that support the schools. The Abington Cultural Council, the Abington Education Foundation, you know, that are doing things to help teachers bring grants in that bring other things into their classrooms. So, we need the funds, but without them, I think we need to continue to strive to do the things we're doing to bring things into the classroom that we're not allowed to, just for the financial constraints alone.
Well, that's based on many, many other questions you could ask. We're kind of running out of time here. And the audience has been very respectful of your folks, and I appreciate your patience out yet, and keeping it quiet so we can conduct this forum. I just want to give, each of you can have two or three-minute closing statement that you can make. But again, I want to thank you for taking the time to give your service and time to our community to help improve the quality of life for us and our children. And I thank you enough. And again, I appreciate all you've done, all of your done in the community, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
So, that having been said, I want to stop with, oh, yeah, we'll start with Jeanette and work our way down with this closing statement. You might want to talk about how you can be reached. These folks are always available, by the way. You see them all around town. If you have any particular questions or shoes I'd like to stop you on the street and ask. Okay, so keep that in mind. If you see them on the street, be civil, please, and just ask a question. Jeanette?
I feel as we move forward in Abington, I'd like to continue to be on the school committee for the reasons I've stated previously. I feel students in this day and age need to be educated not only academically, but socially and emotionally, and that's part of the school's responsibility. Before, that wasn't an, you know, a thing that entered anyone's minds. The schools were just academic, but the way of the world has changed. We need to be able to help educate the whole child so that when they leave Abington Public Schools, they have a strong foundation on which to grow and then start their own lives beyond Abington, hopefully coming back to Abington, but beyond that if they need to. I appreciate your continued support, and I would ask that you respectfully allow me one of your two votes for Abington School Committee on the 26. I thoroughly enjoyed, for the most part, the past three years, and I'd like to continue to supply my, I guess, my expertise to the residents of Abington in education.
Is there a website or something?
Oh, yes. You can reach me at my Abington Public School email, which is jleary@abingtonps.org. Or there is a Facebook, Jeanette Leary for Abington School Committee.
Thank you, Jeanette. Ms. Killian?
I, once again, would like to thank everybody for, that's participated today. I'm very excited about the opportunity to continue to serve the families and the children of Abington. I think that I've demonstrated that I'm fiscally responsible, and I make decisions in the best interest of the town, the families, and ultimately, the children. And I think with my background, I bring a variety, both education and business, and I will continue to serve to the best that I can. And I would like to say that I'm reachable as well. It's ekillian@abingtonps.org. And on April 26, there's a lot going on around town. I would, along with hopefully casting a vote for Ellen Killian, we have a Lions Breakfast, there's a blood drive at the KSC, there's a book sale. I think it's Little League opening day. Not sure if...
Not enough.
I know, I know. And so, I would like to say thank you again.
Thank you, Bob. Ms. Mahal?
Thank you, Bob. And I'd like to thank you again for hosting us today. And I'd like to thank Jeanette and Ellen for coming tonight. I appreciate all their insight. It was great. You could reach me at JonathanMahal@gmail.com or like me on Facebook at Jonathan Mahal for School Committee. I love this town. Born and raised here. As someone who's been in the trenches of Abington Public Schools in the past two years, as a paraprofessional and a tutor and a long-term sub, I understand what it takes and what they need for, to make these schools better. I want to move Abington education forward, and with your help on April 26, I would appreciate your, one of your two votes for School Committee. And I look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. As Ellen mentioned, April 26 is election day. The polls, I believe, are open eight to six.
Eight AM, six.
And also, I talked to Rosie Walls last night at the prom, and every year, they do a book sale. And it's not a better deal in town. If you're a reader like all of us here, hard copies, I believe, could be spot for $1 and paperback's for 50 cents. I'm sure that they would accept donations of books.
That ties in with the summer reading.
That's...
That's a win-win.
Please keep that in mind. And Ellen also mentioned, the Little League starts that day, and it's springtime, so people be careful driving. And all the kids are going to be running around everywhere that day, particularly here in the parking lot. Again, folks, thank you so much for all you've done, all you continue to do, and looking forward to the future. And maybe we'll have a new school with a lot of children, God's children, children might benefit by direct, up in the quality of life improvement. Thank you very much. I want to thank my son Edward and Matt Egan for videotaping this for us, Bill Davis for advising them, and Dustin Cheddon for coordinating this last day, putting it up together for us. We'll have another candidate forum for selectmen, and that'll be Thursday. We'll be taking it Thursday. And then we're also going to do the Board of Health has a competition ready, competitive race, and the...
Planet Board.
So, we'll let that on board, too. Candidates are going to be given a two or three-minute, even if they're on a post, just to introduce themselves to the community, some of them you know, some you may not know. We plan on doing that Monday before the selectment meeting, but I'll try to get in touch with you before then. So, again, thanks for all you've done. Thank our audience. I really appreciate all the people who attended here. And have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
I just appreciate it.
Thank you very much. That was great. Pleasure to meet you guys.
Thanks, Ellen. You do great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.